I'm gonna pick him up.
Oh, God.
So I'm picking up for everybody.
Everybody that calls here.
And this one came up, and this one came up as a Bridgette number.
Yeah, we had to fix it in his phone, so.
Recent.
How about that? It came up as Bridgette.
Oh, no, Pleasantville number.
Pleasantville number?
Six oh nine four oh four. Is that him?
That's Rocco, yeah.
Oh, it's Rocco's number. That's not his number.
No. Please, I've been in here, having, living at Chalk.
It's all right today. I can sit on your feet. I put the oil, you know, some deep fry.
Aye.
There's the two.
And where is it?
Two.
Then he just dump it in the oil.
Yes.
That's what I keep saying.
Ready to call? Yeah, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the flag salute.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual for the liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote?
Here.
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 Okay, this meeting tonight on November twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five, is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. And notices of this meeting have been provided via the email to the Press of Atlantic City, The Daily Journal on November ninth, two thousand twenty four, as well as been posted on the municipal bulletin board at the website, www.bunaburrow.gov. Before we get started with the meeting tonight, I would just like to, express a couple of things on two individuals that passed away within the last couple of days that have been a critical part of Bunaburrow. One is a past retiree, Anthony Casadia. Anthony served on the Bunaburrow Municipal Authorities as their plant superintendent for a number of years back in the day. And some of us veterans that are here, we remember Anthony. You actually worked with them. I remember them, him as a councilman, running his own council. And Anthony dedicated a lot of good years to the borough and the MUA back in that time. So I'd like to have a moment of silence for him tonight and prayers for him and his memories. Thank you. The second person that I want to give the news publicly to, and this person, I grew up all our lives here, Minnetonka section, the borough, was found dead yesterday at his home, Jerry Marinachi. Jerry was our OEM officer. The director and I asked him to come aboard almost two years ago when we had a vacancy and needed help in that area. And Jerry wrote the occasion. He rewrote the whole policy that was outdated. He dealt with the County of Atlantic and put us right in compliance. And from there, he went on, and I could go on and on about updating our radio systems, our system at the water tower and all the, he was very into ham radios and frequencies and all that kind of stuff. So he did such a great job there. He also, I asked him to join the land use board. He did it without hesitation. And more recently, this past year, we put him on the BBMUA board. That, as you could see out there, we're doing great things together, that board and this borough council. And Jerry was one of the main pieces that connected us with this council and went over and beyond the duties of a BBMUA member. He is seventy-five, he was seventy-five years old, lived by himself, cared for his sickly mother and father through the years, instead of starting a life of his own. That's what he dedicated it to. Very bright, intelligent, sensitive, good man. Rare.
And generous.
And very generous man. Very rare. I just want to conclude because it's been a rough twenty-four hours, that Jerry and I talked a lot. I've been going through my family, something with my father-in-law that has really taken me away, and Doug's really filled in a lot, and I want to thank him again tonight in my absence. But Jerry and I talked a lot and communicated a lot. And it's funny that two weeks ago, he said, Mayor, I bought the book you've been wanting me to buy all this time. I said, What's that, Jerry? He said, The Bible. He's read over two hundred and fifty books, but never read the Bible. And he said to me, yeah, no, because we had a lot of talks. He said, I'm gonna get that book, and when I get it and start reading it, I'm gonna tell you. And God is my witness, he bought that book and started reading it two weeks ago. And it's just a shame, again, with my schedule and his, because he's been busy with the MUA issue, going out there, yeah, he said, We're gonna talk about things. Well, Jerry, I know you're up there, and someday we're gonna talk again. Wasn't here, but I know I'm gonna meet him again. And just a remarkable individual that I really want you to just have a moment of silence for and say some prayers for. Thank you. Okay, get myself together. All right, on a happier note, tonight we're here to honor another longtime great employee who I had the pleasure of actually serving my first term, the whole term with him, I believe. As I see on here, it was like in two thousand and two, John, that you came on board. And I remember interviewing you and when you got the job. And as zoning officer, John has served this borough with the utmost integrity and respect for governing body, the townspeople, you name it. Valerie Zandigator Jones has worked with him that entire time, right, Valerie? Because you were hired right about that time. And John saw me earlier this year and said, You know, Mayor, I've been here a long time. He says, I think maybe it's time that I, you know, move on and start enjoying some of his life that he doesn't have to, you know. Because he was very conscientious and would be in here or not during the week maybe, but on weekends, if you didn't see him during the week, you saw him on weekends. That was the employee that John was. John didn't have any, he said, hours. He was here on the call of duty when the work was needed. So, John, we talked, and reluctantly, I said, All right, John. I didn't want him to go, but you know, I have to respect people's wishes. And he, again, he's been just a stellar employee and an advocate for Bunaburrow. So tonight, we could at least recognize him. And I'm glad this is gonna be on TV and YouTube, Facebook, John, you're gonna be famous all over the country. So the borough, council and I have a proclamation, which we're gonna give to you to take home, read here tonight, and also put in our Bunaburrow wall fame you're gonna make. So, John, please step forward, and I'd like to read this to you. And this proclamation. Following proclamation recognizing John A. Keenan on his retirement. And whereas the strength and character of a community are built upon dedication, integrity, professionalism, and individuals who devote their careers to public service. And whereas John A. Keenan began his service to the Borough of Buna on October twenty-second, two thousand and two, and for more than twenty-three years has faithfully and honorably served the Bunaburrow zoning officer. And whereas throughout his tenure, John has demonstrated exceptional expertise in environmental planning, site development, regulatory compliance, applying his technical knowledge with fairness, accuracy, and respect for all who sought his guidance. And whereas John's calm demeanor, easy smile, and ready laugh have made him a steady and approachable presence in the Borough of Buna, earning the appreciation of the residents, professionals, and colleagues alike. And whereas before joining the borough, John built a distinguished professional and military career, serving as commission officer in the United States Navy, and then a principal planner with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and vice president and principal environmental planner in Environmental Evaluation Group Incorporated, reflecting a lifelong community, the leadership, discipline, and public service. And whereas John, after more than two decades of loyal and dedicated service, is retiring effective November seventh, two thousand twenty-five, leaving behind a legacy of professionalism, kindness, and good humor that will be remembered fondly by all who have the pleasure of working with him. Now therefore be it proclaimed today that I, Joseph Ruffey, as the mayor of Bunaburrow, on behalf of this borough council and all the residents, do hereby recognize and honor the outstanding career and invaluable contributions of John A. Keenan with heartfelt appreciation, and best wishes for a long and happy retirement. Signed and sealed this day of November twenty-fourth.
Well, I just thank you very much. This is very humbling to say the least. And I have enjoyed my time with the borough and all the support, especially Valerie, and she's here tonight too to see me off. And could not have done it without her support and help. And frankly, everybody in the borough who I've ever dealt with has been a real pleasure, so I appreciate that.
Okay, John, best of luck to you and your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your service.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan.
Mayor, can I say something about John? When John first walked in here, I guess, I guess back then.
Your councilwoman.
But I remember John from, I was telling his wife, from Folsom. I was borough clerk five years in Folsom.
That's right.
For a long time ago. And John, we had to move the meetings over to the Folsom School. And that's where I met John for the first time. And then when he came here, I said, I knew you.
Small world, right?
It's been a real pleasure.
It's a pleasure having you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks again, John.
Thank you, John.
I take this with me?
This is still up here.
I think that one goes with you.
Oh, okay.
They make two.
We'll be hanging up the other one tomorrow.
Can you come visit it?
Absolutely.
Especially him.
Okay, for the public comment, part of the meeting. Anyone that'd like to comment has five minutes to speak and come to the podium if you wish. Seeing none of the emotions, open the public portion, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Motion, Allen, or second, Barsoya. Roll call vote.
Jim Nazi?
Yeah.
Alvarez?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Barsoya?
Yes.
DeStefano?
Yes.
Sure, I got ahead of myself. Now, anyone wishing to address the mayor and council?
Can I say something? So with Jerry, I don't know if a lot of people have been talking to him. Jerry had been battling a lot of issues with his health, yet he still gave all his time. When he wasn't at the doctor's, battling going back and forth for a long time, he still gave a lot of his time.
Yes.
I understand.
Yes, he did.
Many possible.
Yeah, and now that you're bringing it up, I was gonna build on new business, but I'll come to you guys now. Uh, no problem. I did want to, he has a surviving brother. He never had any children. And I really don't know any other family here, so he has a brother that lives in Pennsylvania. So what I'd like to do is work something up and do a tribute to him and have him on that wall next meeting, which will be our last meeting. So I spoke with Mary Ann briefly today, and she'll be in charge of getting all the information, if you guys would be good with that. We could have his brother, his nephews here, and his sister-in-law and pay tribute to the family. So thanks for bringing, yeah, Georgia, I was gonna do it later, but it's good you brought it up. Everybody's good with that, so. All right, any other comment? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion, Barsoya, second, DeStefano. Roll call vote.
Jim Nazi?
Yeah.
Alvarez?
Yeah.
Adams?
Yes.
Barsoya? Yes. And DeStefano?
Yes.
Okay, I just have one item of an update for the council tonight. And that's regarding the Buna Tribe Minnetonka Estates. The word I received last was they were gonna try to finish the paving of the road either today or tomorrow, or the following week after Thanksgiving, which they felt was more of a realistic target date. So again, I haven't even been down there to look if they started anything today or if they're gonna do anything tomorrow. But I just want to inform council that the bond went through, we pursued it, and that road will be done by the end of the month. Okay, that's all I have. Consent agenda includes items of business which are not controversial, do not require individual discussion. A motion approving the consent agenda is moved, seconded, voted upon, item to apply item by the borough council. If any discussion is requested on that item, it's removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. Resolution number two thirteen dash twenty-five. This is a resolution appointing the qualified purchasing agent to serve as the public agency compliance officer in the Borough of Buna. Second resolution is two fourteen dash twenty-five. This is a resolution accepting the resignation of Wayne Shockey as a member of the Bunaburrow Fire Department. Resolution number two fifteen dash twenty-five. This is a resolution provisionally appointing Walter Kernerup as electrical subcode official for the Borough of Buna retroactive to November seventeen, two thousand twenty-five. The last resolution is two sixteen dash twenty-five. This is a resolution to amend transfer appropriation balances resolution. Next, we have bills paid as listed. Clarks Report, minutes of workshop meeting of November tenth, two thousand twenty-five, and minutes of the regular meeting of November tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Adams as the motion.
Second.
Second, Barsoya. Roll call vote.
Jim Nazi?
Yeah.
Alvarez?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Barsoya? Yes. And DeStefano?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll go to committee reports. This is our move for that. We'll go to planning, zoning, and inspections. Councilman Jim Nazi.
We got three really problems in this town that we've been trying to work very, very hard on. And first one is one oh eight Buna Vista Avenue. Jimmy Sorrow met with the property owner and working on getting the property cleaned up at the request of mayor and council. Councilman Adams, a request, a court summons will be issued. This has been a problem with this property ongoing. They keep saying they're cleaning it. We keep saying it's not cleaned up enough. So I guess if the worst comes to worst, if we have to summons them to get it done, that's what we're gonna have to do.
Very good.
We got one ten East Arbor Avenue. This is another very big problem. The resident was found guilty for failure to clean the property and remove the junk in two thousand twenty-four. Additionally, was fined twelve thousand dollars. Was also issued by the judge. I mean, Valerie got in touch with the court to find out if this was paid and what steps will be taken since the failure to comply with the judge's order. So we are working on this. The court never got back to her up until, I don't know if it was today or not, but Thursday and Friday, I talked to her. The girl that was in charge never got back yet. So we're waiting to find out if he paid this fine, because it's got worse and worse and worse.
It's out to the street now.
Huh?
It's out to the street now.
Yeah, and it's, and they were fined twelve thousand dollars. Whether they paid it or not, or they're not doing what they were supposed to be doing.
Best way to find out is issue them another summons, and they come back to court. Hopefully, it's in front of the same judge if they ignored his order.
First of all, we have to find out if they paid the fine the first time. And this is according to Valerie. This is what has to be done first. If they paid the fine, then we go back to take them to court and find, and in front of the judge again, because he's not complying to do what he was supposed to do the first time.
So the office of your department is following up on that?
We are following strongly with that.
Mayor, I have to say something else. That's the house we had trouble with. The owner lives down the shore.
Yes.
Yes.
And the tenant's in the house. And the tenant was filing, signing the papers for the, to go to court, remember?
Yeah.
All that, yeah, so we gotta take them.
It's not a great deal.
Right, but you're following through with it.
We're working on it, and if we have to take them to court and get another summons for them, we'll have to do that, that's all.
Okay.
And the other one is two ninety-six Wheat Road and three thirty-five Wheat Road. Notices of violations were sent regular and certified mail to clean the property November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. Compliance date is November twenty-first. Code enforcement officer is following up on the deal.
Great.
There's, that's the three problem properties that we have in town.
Okay, and just to, one final note on that. I have noticed though, the property on next to Cleary School, a secret roof is being built now.
Yes.
So on a good note again, trying to find something positive. That, and we met Councilman Jim Nazi, Adams, and myself, were the hearing officials. And that is going through. The other place on East Artic Avenue has been demoed, so that's already went through. So there are a couple of positive things happening with that department in being aggressive to get everybody to code.
Right.
So they have until December fourteenth on that property to make sure that structure is enclosed and the roof is on and secure. And then they have till June first, I believe, we agreed that we'd have all the interior done, and then that property will be going for a rental. So that's very good news. Okay, councilman, thank you. Go report. Next, we'll go to finance. Councilman Alvarez.
So as far as our budget year, we're going well. Spoke with our CFO. So we're on target. We're probably gonna meet our committee just to review the last final transfers for the year.
Okay.
As far as tax collection for the month of October, it was a million six hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. Everything's going well there. And we're still going after properties that haven't caught up to their taxes from last year.
Very good, that's all I, all right, thank you, councilman. Next, we go to public safety and tree lights. Council President Adams.
For the Bunaburrow Volunteer Fire Department, they had ten calls for service, five fire alarm activations, one CO alarm activation, two service assignments, one vehicle fire, and one brush fire. They said it's been a quiet month, and we hope this continues for the rest of twenty twenty-five. Also, the fire department's participating in Bunaburrow Parks and Recreation's Christmas Parade and Tree Lighting on Saturday, December sixth. They say we hope to see you at six P.M. Santa will be riding around Minnetonka and Landerville next month via the fire truck. Please keep an eye out on Facebook for the confirmed dates and times. And please check your smoke and CO detectors and ensure they're not out of date. If you need help replacing a smoke or CO2 detector in your home, please do not hesitate to reach out to the fire department. And per Bunaburrow ordinance, homes must have numbers identifying the residence on the home at the street and at the site of the mailbox. Failure to do so leads to prolonged response times. Please rectify the identification at your home if numbers are not properly displayed. In the future, the fire department will send letters to those who have not corrected the issue. And the office at Bunaburrow Fire Department is open on Mondays, three to eight P.M. and Fridays, nine A.M. to one P.M. If you're interested in joining the department or want to speak to a firefighter for more information, please stop by on Monday and Friday eve, or Monday evenings at seven P.M. So thank you to the fire department. Next is the police department. Another crime report from the police chief. And for October, they've had eight hundred and sixty-three calls for service, three hundred and six motor vehicle stops, two hundred and fifty-seven motor vehicle tickets, seventeen arrests in our town, one DWI, eight disputes, eight motor vehicle crashes, five well-being checks, hundred and sixty-three business checks, twelve animal complaints, seventy-three medical assists, ten domestic calls, one missing person in vest, and twenty-seven burglar and fire alarm calls. And there's a whole lot of other good information, statistical information. And the best part is Officer of the Month for October, Officer Luke Lackowitz, badge number eleven one twenty. Officer Lackowitz has worked for Franklin House of Police Department since two thousand twenty-four and has currently assigned to Squad A. He has shown his dedication to the department by continuing to perform at a high level. Even though he's attending the police academy and working full-time, he still managed to conduct sixty-six motor vehicle stops, issue forty-four tickets, and handle six investigations and make four arrests. So congratulations, Officer Luke Lackowitz. Great job, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could do it now, Mayor, on their committee reports, just for public safety. The mayor spoke of the passing of our emergency management coordinator, Jared Marinachi. And we do need to fill that position, that title, as soon as possible. I had several conversations today with our police chief. And our chief, Chief DeCesry, is willing to fill the unexpired term starting today until our reorg January sixth, fifth, January fifth of next year. We would make it a permanent appointment. But our chief is willing to take that title on right now for no compensation, just to help us out. So. Do you want to make that a resolution?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe it's the mayor's appointment with the advice of the Senate council. I have to check to make sure, but I believe that's.
But we need a resolution that passes tonight.
We need a resolution ratifying your appointment, your honor.
Well, that's recommended. Police chief for interim here until January fifth. Have a motion by council.
Motion.
Motion.
By Adams.
And a second by Alvarez. Any discussion?
Anybody, any questions that, Jerry's appointment would have been up at the end of this year anyway. So with the help of the chief, we'll have some time, buy us some time to find a permanent appointment and see where we're gonna go from there.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
All right, roll call vote. Nicole?
Yeah.
Alvarez?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Barsoya? Yes.
Yeah.
Announcing service state.
And while I'm there, the mayor reminded me, there is an update for the public, anybody who knew Jerry, and all of council. Jerry's brother, Robert, or as I know him, Bobby, I went to school with Bobby. The funeral services are being handled by Roan's Funeral Home. And the services will be on Saturday, eleven twenty-nine. Initially, it was said it would be Friday, but it's now on Saturday, eleven twenty-nine, from one to two. And there will be a cemetery burial afterwards. And as we get more information, we'll pass it out to, to mayor and council.
Thanks.
You say it's at Roan or at a church?
Roan, it's at Roan.
It's at Roan.
At Roan. There'll be a service at three. It's from two to, one to two, and then a service at two, and then the cemetery at three.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Anything else?
That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we've got a recreation. Councilwoman Barsoya.
For recreation, as Councilman Adams already brought up, Christmas parade in Tree Lightning with Santa will take place Saturday, December sixth, beginning at Cleary Elementary School and entering with festivities here at Bruno Malini Park. Come and join, come and enjoy the entertainment. Come and join, come and enjoy the entertainment. They are planning hot chocolate. They're going to have a Santa letter station, writing station, and more. Participants can still register for the parade, that will be at bunarec@gmail.com. So please join them, it's going to be a, really, it's really a nice event. Next on my list, I have, I don't know if you've noticed, Blackwater Pond is, they started baling the hay over there. So it started, they're cutting and baling the hay. And I also received a phone call this week, we have a new president of Buna Little League. It is Mr. Procopio. He is taking over for Carl Molinelli. So that is a name change, that he's taking over for this year.
Very good.
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mary Ann. Next, we'll go to buildings and grounds and improvements, Councilwoman Andalora.
Okay, I just have a few things. We're trying to get through the end of the year with the final services on the buildings, with the pest control, we just had that done in our last part of our contract. State fire inspection, they're gonna be coming down to go through all our buildings. Fire extinguishers were all updated and checked out. Also, the back pavilion, the electric will be shut off in a couple days, refrigerator and freezer off. The sprinklers have been drained at the EMS, firehouse, and the Borough Hall. And let me see. Bill purchased the chemicals for the sidewalks at the three buildings. And what else? Fire inspected, that's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Next, we've got a roads and recycling, Councilman DeStefano.
Thank you, Mayor. We have connection in progress, they've gone through the town twice already. Branches will be collected after the holiday. Stormwater labeling completed for this year. Two facing grates to be purchased to complete a stormwater project. Sweeping complete for the month for stormwater, and they'll be working on another stormwater report. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Any unfinished business come before Mayor and Council?
I do, Mayor. I just wanted to update, and this was going to be a bigger presentation, but every day, this, the topics with this change, this is concerning, I didn't have time to. But this is concerning the tax liens. I had reported to Mayor and Council that I was gonna take the lead, if it was okay with council, to work with the clerk's office and administrator for, I'm sorry, for the tax liens that are owed. So initially, we came up with 13 properties in the borough that the municipality tried to sell before, sell the tax liens on it before, and they weren't sold, for whatever reasons. And those properties, I think that last attempt was in 2013. So those properties are just sitting on the books, they're getting further and further and further upside down, meaning what's owed on the properties are, is more than the value of the properties. And these properties are sitting there. The entire borough, everybody in the borough that pays taxes are paying for these non-paying property owners, meaning the school taxes are still being charged to those properties, the state, the county, and any other taxes are still being charged to these properties, but we, the taxpayers, are paying their share. And that's just not right. So in an effort to get these tax liens sold and get the properties backs on our tax rolls so that taxes can be paid on these properties, we accumulated this list. So this list initially had 13, but if you look on the right-hand side of this list, I have two more here for, if you look on the right-hand side of this list, you'll see the seven that, I spoke to, I spoke to Alan Gibner today, who's handling all of our tax liens and all the legal side of it, and it's very, very expensive for him to do all this work on all these properties. There's fees that go to the county for searches, there's fees that go to companies for personal service, there's his fees, and there's just a lot of fees involved, court fees that are involved in the process of getting these properties turned into our name. So when we talked about these 13 properties, you'll see on the right-hand side, there's seven of them that have some writing, Old Bakery, which is the old bakery on Wheat Road, the old Bernini Swim Pool, Three Downing Properties, Four Downing Properties, I'm sorry, and the old Morelli Building. These seven are within about two months of becoming our property. Taken out of the, we foreclosed on them, taken out of the property owner's names and put into ownership of Buna Borough. So that shortened this list up to now just six properties, there's six properties left on this list. So I want to advise council that I suggested to Alan, and I would confirm it tomorrow, that instead of him going forward on these other six, that we hold off on him doing that because it'll be cheaper for us just to sell these tax liens than it would be for us to pay him to go ahead with these foreclosures. So my suggestion, and talking with Rick today, talking with Alan and our administrator, is that we have another tax lien sale, which would be these six properties. And my suggestion to council, and it's not tonight, I'm just giving you an overview, this isn't gonna happen probably till January, February, but I wanted to update everybody on what I've been working on, or we've been working on, and where we're going with this and what we want to get to. These six properties would, I would suggest that we have a very low minimum bid on these properties, and we have a live auction. We can have a live auction here for these six leaned properties. And we also have a list of about 25 or 30 borough-owned properties already. They're already in our name, they're properties that are sitting there. Now, they're not costing us anything, but we're also not making any money on that. We're not taking tax money in. So my next step to this project is if you guys like this concept or want to discuss it tonight, that we'll keep these six properties out of Gibner's hands for foreclosure with the anticipation of selling them at the cheapest that we can, just so somebody buys them and they could foreclose because of the timeliness, right, Rick? Is that a, because they've been under foreclosure for so long, they don't have to wait that period?
There's a period of six months that they would have to wait, but because they've been under foreclosure for that period of time, they'd be.
They could start immediate, yeah. The people that would buy these liens, the rest of these six that are on this list, they could start foreclosure immediately once they buy it, so they don't have to wait. So in the future, I would suggest that we sell these six tax liens. We sell them at the cheapest possible starting bid, like maybe 100 bucks. Let's just sell them and get them back on our tax rolls. They keep accumulating expenses, and we keep paying for the school taxes on them and all these other taxes, and it's just costing us money, and that's ridiculous. So that's that. What I'm gonna start working on then is that 25 or 30 property list of the current owned properties, which seven of these will now be added to that list because in two months, they will be borough-owned. So these seven, plus the 25 or 30 that we have, I'd like to get approval from council that I'm gonna go through it. I'm gonna provide a packet to council showing specifically this. And this is what I was gonna do tonight with the 13, but once I talked to Gibner, he said they're real close. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna come to council with the zoning map with little dots on it showing exactly where all of our borough-owned properties are. So you'll get a copy of the zoning map, you'll get a copy of the tax map showing the outline of each property in red on the tax map. And then I'll give you a copy of the, an aerial view with yellow outline like this one of every property so that you all could see it, where it's at on the tax map, what it looks like from an aerial view. And then there'll be a page of notes, everything that I know about the property, the zone that it's in, which means what's possible, what can be done at the property and what can't be done at the property. So I will have that for everybody here. But Nicole's helping a lot, Mary Ann's helping a lot, Rick and Alan. So, I mean, it's a project, but I really think it's something that's way, way overdue, like since 2013. And if we don't act on it, it just sits there and grows like a cancer, it's terrible.
They're not making money.
No. Not making money. The land, the borough-owned land doesn't cost us money, but we're not making money on it either. So it's just something that has to be done. It is timely, it's a big project, but it just, it just needs to be done. And I'm kinda into this, you could tell.
Yeah, so we'll take advantage of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that it's an excellent report from the council president. I would say definitely moving into 26, continue with your studies and what you have to present to us. And again, it's all about getting things on the rolls again and getting some tax revenue back into the borough.
So on the regular list, I would have had the names like at the top of this for number one, number two, number three. So if any of yous want to know who owns them, or you see the particulars here about how much is owed and how much is accrued, which is ridiculous. But if you want to know names, you know, I have them readily available to you. I just didn't put them on tonight, 'cause then it would have been confused with the seven that will be ours and the six that are going up for tax lien.
Easily read.
So just let me know.
Very detailed report, Council.
And probably, we probably, I probably won't have a report with this, I don't think, for December, but we'll pick up on it again. I mean, I'm gonna be working on it in December, but I'll probably report back again in January, and maybe we'll have our sale in.
February.
In February, just to shoot for something and have a deadline.
That's just the estimated timeline the council president's giving you, and I think it's right on.
How about any questions about this year?
Any questions in council?
A lot of homework.
A lot of homework.
Yeah, good job, Doug, yeah.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else new unfinished business? Okay, new business?
New business, I just have one, Mayor.
Yes.
I received a flyer from the Buna Historic Society. They'll be honoring former Mayor G. Nine Eddie, December 17th, and Dolores Campari.
Yes.
So I think it'd be nice if we try to go and support it, if we possible.
It's at Martins.
At Martins, yeah.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
So if anybody has that there. Okay. There's a phone number if you want to give them, do you have the phone number on there?
No, I don't.
Okay.
My flyers.
Can we put that on the, is it on the website already?
It's not on the website, I have it on my computer.
Okay, maybe we could put that flyer on the website, so if people want to call to purchase tickets.
That's a good idea.
Especially to honor one of our mayors.
Yep, I agree. Okay, the next meeting of Mayor and Council will be on December 14th, 2025, at 6:30. On behalf of Mayor and Council, yeah. Uh-oh. Okay, thank you, 15. All right, thanks, good catch.
He was tested to see if you were listening.
There you go. Thanks, Brian. 2015 at 6:30 PM. I wish, on behalf of Mayor and Council, everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a blessing in tax.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, Barsoya, second, Andalora, all is in favor, say aye. You need to adjourn, thank you, everyone. Good job, Coach.